I hereby call to order this regular meeting of the Board of Education for Willmet Public School, District 39, this Monday, January 25, 2021. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Lisa Schneider-Fibbs.
Here.
John Caesaretti.
Here.
Frank Panzika.
Here.
Amy Paley.
Here.
Mark Steen.
Here.
Ellen Sternweiler. Erin Stone.
Here.
Okay, we'll move on to the Pledge of Allegiance. We have a video of the High Crest students leading the Pledge of Allegiance this evening.
And we have Kelly Jackson here representing them in person, too. Thank you for joining us, Mrs. Jackson.
Thanks. Yeah, we put together a short video. We actually showed the video on Friday. We, if you recall, in October, we opened a time capsule that had been left for us at the Millennium. And so it was on High Crest's 25th anniversary. And so it was really exciting for us to open it. And then each homeroom contributed something to remember 2020 by. And so we filled the time capsule on Friday. Dr. Kremis Gole was there with us. And every homeroom made a short little video that we showed. So I have a few snippets for you. And then one of our homerooms really did a great job with it. They took some surveys and they gathered photos. Ms. Eckley's homeroom, sixth grade homeroom. And so they are doing the pledge for us tonight. And that comes at the end of the video. So enjoy.
Mr. Aho's homeroom put in a cup, one short story from every student about what life was like in 2020. And we also put in some other trinkets such as a mask and some incredible stickers.
Hi, I'm Freddie from Mrs. Albrecht's class. And for the time capsule, our class made some cards for the class of 2045 to show how our life was in 2020.
For Ms. Alperstein's class time capsule submission, we printed out pictures that would remind us of the 2020-2021 school year. Hopefully, when this time capsule is opened in years to come, students will get a little glimpse of what life was like for us during this crazy time.
Hi, I'm Georgia.
I'm Grace.
And I'm Holly.
And I'm from Ms. Gibson's class.
Our contribution to the HMS Time Capsule is invaluable.
Each person in our class made a collage of something that they thought was important to 2020.
So they either talked about a new app that came out in 2020 or new electronics that came out. And we also honored some people who passed away.
We chose an iPhone 12 case because that is the newest and most popular iPhone.
Ms. Corrigan's class decided to make Among Us drawing and description of Among Us to bring up something that we really enjoyed in 2020.
Our project is a toilet paper art project. We decided to draw doodles of interesting things from 2020, like quarantine or Black Lives Matter.
Hi, I'm Sam from Mrs. Everhart's homeroom. And for the time capsule, we made this picture dictionary. It has every letter in the alphabet in it. There's a picture and a little description of what it is that some, for every letter that goes along with 2020.
We decided to capture the year by creating a memory book. We covered the front and back cover with images that made us think of 2020. Each student filled out a reflection sheet where they talked about a movie, a book, and a song they remembered from the year. They also wrote a few sentences about what they thought of 2020.
Hi, I'm Alicia.
And I'm Sophia. We're from Dr. Heidi's homeroom.
We contributed to the HMS Time Capsule by writing letters to future Hawks.
In the letters, we wrote about our experiences in sixth and fifth grade at High Crest Middle School.
We hope these letters are meaningful and encouraging to future Hawks.
Thanks.
Hey, Room 145 had a great idea.
It's for our time capsule. It's gonna be great.
We all are putting in things that represent us.
Little trinkets that represent our personalities. Let's go Hawks!
We're from Mrs. Julia's class.
We created headlines from 2020.
Hi, I'm Riley from Ms. Saric's homeroom. And we have created an Amazon package with our signatures on it, filled with things that we think are memorable from 2020.
Mrs. Townsend's homeroom, six feet of 2020.
Hello, future Hawks. Can you read this? It's written in cursive. Does cursive still exist in the 2040s? Or is cursive obsolete? In 2021, our homeroom was ish when it came to writing in cursive. Is ish still a popular word in the 2040s? Please check out our artifacts to see our best attempts at cursive writing. Happy day to you!
We have students from Ms. Eckley's sixth grade class.
For our time capsule project, we surveyed the students at High Crest to create graphs of what was possible for 2020.
We also invited students to submit photos that they want to share with the Hawks of 2045. Students made pictures of their tests or early family accomplishments even just to remember. We hope some of us can remember from that. Can you believe it is 38 years later by then? Now, we'd like to leave you in the pledge.
A high pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So I'm, I've left speechless. That was so fabulous.
It was a much longer video with 40 homerooms this year, but this was just a snippet. We, I just have to say, we have some phenomenal artists and some really creative thinkers. And if you get a chance to make it back in 2045 and see the cursive writing, you'll be in shock and awe. But it was a really fun project, so thank you.
So that was just truly terrific. Let's give them a round of applause. I had so much fun coming to the opening of the time capsule back in October. I know some other board members were here, too. It was, so I know that in 25 years, when they open it, people will be like, what? Because they do think 2020 is kind of, it's a real year. Yeah. So many memorable events. Or to forget. That was really, it just made my day, which is hard to do sometimes. So I want to make an announcement about participation for remote public comment. If you wish to provide public comment to the board remotely using Zoom, we ask that you register prior to the meeting using the Zoom link provided on the agenda. Participants will have confirmation email response with a link to access the meeting. And during public comments, I will ask for participants to raise their hand. Actually, it'll be Tony who calls on you, and you will have three minutes to speak. Please make sure your backgrounds are free from distractions, appropriate for the public forum, and that you are in a quiet location. Now I'm going to seek a motion to approve the minutes of the December 14, 2020 Board of Education meeting.
I move to approve the minutes of the December 14, 2020 Board of Education meeting.
May I have a second?
Second.
The motion having been made and seconded, board members, are there any comments, errors, or omissions to the minutes? Okay. All those in favor approving the minutes is submitted? Do we need to, do we need to roll call or we don't? Okay. Please say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. Now it's time for public comment. The Board invites public participation at D39 board meetings. We will begin with audience members that are attending the meeting in person. And then we will ask anyone participating in public comments via Zoom to raise their hand. I must remind all guests to use the microphone, state your name and community of residence, and by board directive, you are allowed three minutes. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address the board? Okay. Mr. DiMonte, do we have any remote participants who wish to speak?
We do. We have one that raised their hand. Thank you, Avita. I'm going to move you over into the meeting, and then you can unmute and turn on your video. Should be coming into the meeting. Again, you can unmute and turn your video on. She's in our meeting. She just needs to turn on her video. Avita, can you at least unmute so I check to see if we can hear you? Looks like she's trying to connect us. I'm sure everyone can see on their screen. About, click on the microphone icon. Let's see if we can at least hear you. I just prompted to unmute.
Okay, can you hear me now? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. We can't see you, but we can hear you.
Okay, I'm, hold on, I'm working, working on it. So how do I get this one? Enable. What do you have? I don't know. I don't know.
You know what? For the purpose of the meeting, as long as we have audio, I think, I mean, it's ultimately up to the board. But are we okay if she continues, or do you want her to try to get her video?
Why don't you just try for like 15 more seconds? And then if you can't, we'll go ahead and just do audio. Because I've never done this, like, what, what's left camera? No, I don't know what to do.
It shows that your, your video is on in Zoom, so I would assume it's a setting on your computer. Possibly having to give it permission.
Go to Settings. Allow Zoom, open, hold on. Start my video.
I just sent a prompt.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Click on that and see what it does.
Is that, hold on, I've got something. Can you see me? Can you see me now?
No, no, we just see the screen. Yeah.
Sure. I don't know what to, I'm sorry, I don't know what to do. You can hear me, though, right? So go ahead and make your comment. Okay. So I have three questions for the board. Question number one, and I also sent this as an email. This week in, first one, this week in Illinois, vaccinations enter Phase 1B, which includes teachers. Will District 39 require teachers to get vaccinated? Question number two, assuming teachers are vaccinated, has the administration started to consider making changes to their instructional models? And finally, my third question is, there has been talk in Illinois about school districts extending the school year to make up for lost instruction time. Is District 39 considering this for fifth to eighth grade to make up for both the canceled school days and the asynchronous days that are basically independent study? That's it. Thank you very much. Mr. DiMonte, is there anybody else waiting to make a comment?
There is not.
Okay. So now we're going to go ahead to board reports. We're going to start with facilities development. And I will ask Ms. Pulling to go ahead and give the report on behalf of Mr. Weiler.
Okay, great. So at our committee of the whole meeting, Mr. Baltmeyer presented and reviewed the construction project timeline for summer 2021. Those projects include the Ramona and McKenzie Keep 39 construction and the junior high second floor air conditioning, along with some life safety work at the junior high. All of these are expected to be completed by fall when we start school. Mr. Papa Nicholas of Nicholas and Associates provided a budget update for the projects at Ramona and McKenzie. Roofing issues were identified at McKenzie, and for cost efficiency, the roof replacement has been rolled into that project. The total budget cost for both schools is currently at 8.2 million. The Metropolitan Water Reclamation District reported that the underground stormwater systems at each school needed some attention. So Mr. Papa Nicholas reported that 234,000 of that budget was due to roof replacement at McKenzie and the stormwater replacement at both schools. He also gave an update about the junior high air conditioning and life safety budget. He noted that the project is right now at 60% design issuance, and he would compile a budget assessment to present at next month's committee of the whole meeting. He also said that he would provide bid alternate details for the next meeting. He stated that he received commitment letters from manufacturers for the unit vents and the chiller. Should the board not approve the air conditioning project, the letters eliminate all risk of penalty for the district. And that's the update from facilities.
Very much. So now we're going to move to school finance. Mr. Caesaretti.
Good morning, President Thabes. So at the same meeting, Mr. Baltmeyer had quite a starring role. He went through the budget calendar and, and the resolution that I believe we are going to adopt today, which we presented in this meeting later on. Mr. Baltmeyer also, in the meeting, stated the Capitol Project's timeline had slated the McKenzie roof replacement for the summer of 2024. Following discussions with Nicholas and Associates and STR Architects, it made sense and was cost efficient to replace the roof during the Keep 39 construction rather than construct patchwork repairs and then re-roof at a later date. He said the roofing component cost was $180,000. Mr. Baltmeyer also stated that the federal government passed another round of stimulus over winter break. And based on ISB rough estimates, the amount provided towards education was quoted to be about $56 billion, which equates to $210,000, or $50 per student in District 39. Districts would have the ability to spend the allocated funds through September 2022. Mr. Baltmeyer stated that he would keep the board apprised of updates on the exact amount to be issued and the allowable expenditures for those funds. Dr. Kremis Gole noted the allocation of federal stimulus money is not based on enrollment or low income data and that District 39 would receive the same amount as Kinnell Worth or Boka. That's my report.
Thank you. Strategy Committee, Mr. Steen.
So the Strategy Committee met in the same committee of the whole, and we received a report from Mrs. Jackson and Ms. Dominique, who led a team of teachers and administrators to explore options for how we implement the fifth through eighth grade hybrid model on Mondays in the third quarter. And it included a variety of options. Some, for instance, utilizing half-day schedules and continuing with alternate, alternative full days of instructions within the hybrid model. The benefits and drawbacks to using Mondays for alternating in-person instruction were also explored. Mrs. Jackson stated feedback from the targeted review of in-person programming, including parent and teacher surveys requested a review of half-day in-person learning. She reported that many options considered for half-day in-person learning and all ideas and logistic consideration, considerations such as instructional time, content area focus, in-person prioritization, timing of bus route, pickup and drop-up issues, and time required to clean classrooms were considered. Ultimately, after much thought and deliberation, the team found the current hybrid model to provide the best instructional services to students while maximizing in-person learning across content areas and minimizing disruption. Mrs. Jackson stated the team began evaluating the restructuring of the Monday schedule in a preliminary review of alternating Mondays between two groups, which would allow approximately three additional in-person instructional days over the course of an eight-week quarter. Two significant disadvantages to this approach included the loss of the fully remote and synchronous whole group instructional days that Mondays currently offer, as well as an equivalent increase in asynchronous days to accommodate the in-person alternating days. Teachers value having remote synchronous instruction on Mondays as it allows the whole class to participate and foster discussion together, becoming more of one united class. A survey was recently sent to students to obtain feedback before deciding on how to move forward with the Monday schedule. And having evaluated all options, the team ultimately landed on recommendations to maintain Mondays as they are, along with the alternating full day schedule for the remainder of the week. And with the board's full support, the final hybrid calendar for quarter three was published. That's the end of the strategy report.
So we're going to move on to the liaison reports. The Community Review Committee, Ms. Pulling.
Yes, so the Community Review Committee met on Tuesday, January 5. They are assisting the district with all phases of the strategic planning process. So at that meeting, they focused on Phase One of strategic planning, which is stakeholder awareness. So after we gave some district updates, the committee divided into their three subcommittees. One group is researching the best modes of communication. Another to develop draft communication plan for the community within the stakeholders. And another to develop the communication plan for at-large stakeholders. Each subcommittee is working on identifying stakeholder groups and drafting how the district can best connect with families and the community to essentially get the word out that D39 is embarking on a new strategic planning process. And they will meet again on February 2.
Great, thank you. So Educational Foundation, Dr. Kremis Gole.
I'd like to brief update. I attended the Educational Foundation meeting on the board's behalf this month. The team discussed their Silver Lining Project, which is a project celebrating the unexpected and rewarding moments during COVID-19. The goal is to capture the positive moments that students and staff have experienced, students, staff, and families have experienced during the school year. So there are details available on the website. They put together a flyer as well as a really nice video that has been used in our classes to generate some support for the project and help students to understand what is being asked of them. So we're excited about that project. The group also discussed GRIP grants, applications for which are currently open for teachers throughout the district. And then finally, the group discussed their upcoming Bingo fundraising event. The event is modeled after the, is modeled after the popular annual event traditionally held in person, but this year will be held entirely virtually. This event is scheduled for February 6. Tickets are available online on the Educational Foundation website. Because of the unique arrangements for the event this year, it is a great opportunity to involve relatives and friends and grandparents even from near and far. I know I, for one, will have a contingency of family members from across all over joining us for Bingo in support of the Educational Foundation and just a really fun evening of togetherness for our community in a safe way. So we're excited for that event, and I'm really impressed by how the foundation has coordinated the event this year. So think about joining us if you're free that night. As always, those tickets are available at their website, and then you can also go online to make a donation if you wish. And that's about it. They talked about a lot of things, but those were the highlights.
Great report. Illinois Association of School Boards, Ms. Stone.
Yes. Most of the news coming out of the IASB relates to the state legislation, which is next on our agenda. As far as non-legislative information is concerned, IASB is sponsoring a number of webinars in anticipation of the upcoming election in April that includes school board, school board seats. They are having a webinar on January 28 about welcoming new school board members and one on February 11 that provides information to school board candidates.
Terrific. Well, you should keep going and give us the legislative update.
Yes. The big news coming out of Springfield is the education reform bill, House Bill 2170, that was approved on January 11 and sent to Governor Pritzker. It is the educational pillar of the Illinois Legislative Black Caucus's social justice reform package. Portions that will affect pre-K through 8 education include required instruction and computer literacy skills starting in elementary school, school districts needing to report on educational technology capacity and policies, and ISB assessing all students entering kindergarten with a common assessment tool. The bill also creates a whole child task force and a P-20 council to research and make recommendations for both short and long-term recovery actions for public school students in the wake of the COVID-19 pandemic. And that report is due at the end of this year. The Illinois Senate is returning tomorrow, and the Illinois House of Representatives is returning on February 2. The combined State of the State address and budget address is scheduled for February 17.
So now we'll move on to information items. Let's start with written communications. Dr. Kremis Gole.
Thank you. The board received written communication from Avita Valgaras regarding student surveys on Monday instruction and low staff participation rates in saliva screening, from Rebecca and Jonathan Guarian, Maja Cos, Jane Tomlinson, and Amy and Mike Oslund requesting safeguard screening continue beyond January and encouraging increased participation.
Want to administrative announcements?
Yes, I have quite a few to make this evening. So we'll start with the Metrics Team update. In accordance with the recent decision of the Metrics Team, we are now meeting bi-monthly. So we've developed a bi-monthly schedule. We did not meet this past Friday. However, the Metrics Dashboard and Full Report was updated and published. And the subcommittees of the team held meetings to discuss safeguard screening, the schedule, and recommendations for February. So I will see if I'm able to briefly share my screen. I can point to the... Okay, well, there we go. So you'll see in looking at our Metrics Reopening Advisory Team page, the dashboard has been simplified to really focus on those metrics that we find most important to the decisions that we face at this point. We've learned a whole lot throughout the first semester, and so we've really been able to condense and streamline and really focus our attention on these metrics. You'll see again at the top, community spread metrics, and at the bottom, some of our operational metrics, including COVID-positive cases in the district. As we scroll down, our full reports continue to be accessible online, including those reports that would reflect the weeks when we aren't having official meetings. We will try to keep up with those reports so people can continue to follow along. We have our positivity rates. We're really very pleased with the community spread metrics, which continue to decline thanks in large part to everyone's adherence to all of the safety measures that we know are important to reducing the spread of COVID-19. We see down here that there's been just a little bit of an uptick recently in Willmet, so we're keeping a close eye on that. But really, overall, the metrics are moving in the right direction. The same is true as we look at new cases per 100,000, and we continue to report our cases here at the bottom. Any cases that are reported for students or for staff are included in these data that are reported here. Those include any cases that would be found through safeguard screening as well as cases that are reported to us through other testing mechanisms. And then finally, the COVID-19 cases in District 39. This really is a cumulative summary of those cases that we have helped to process and support, as well as those active cases that we see occurring within our district currently. Again, sources for relevant metrics continues to be available. Here you can see live data as you access those reports. Here again are some of the most often utilized sources of data. And then as you scroll down, our communications continues to be provided here. Those now are only going every other week as we meet as a team. And then finally, again, our positive cases as they are reported out by our schools also are linked in here so that anyone who's interested in following along district-wide can access the same information available through this folder right here. And so, as I mentioned, one of the most important discussions that did happen this week, even though the team as a whole didn't meet, is we had the Testing Committee, the Subcommittee of the Metrics Team, gather to review our safeguard screening experiences so far and to make a recommendation with me to the board for continuing safeguard screening. So I want to provide the board and our community with a bit of an overview of the district's experiences so far in January and then make a recommendation for continuing through February with the same frequency for each of the three cohorts. Remembering that right now, testing, screening is available for our in-person learners at elementary schools, for our in-person learners at the 5A campus, as well as for our staff. So we really took a close look at each of those three cohorts to determine if we should continue with all three of them on a weekly basis, if there's some other frequency that might make a little more sense. At this time, the Testing Subcommittee acknowledges that there really is not sufficient data upon which to evaluate the program yet. We really, at the time of meeting, had only been screening for two and a half, three weeks. We really had limited data. As of Thursday, when the team met, the district had processed more than 3,000 screening tests for participating students and staff. From those, there were three samples that indicated a potentially clinically significant finding, and they were referred for PCR testing. Each of the follow-up diagnostic PCR testing results did not confirm the original screening, and so that is something we continue to monitor. So while these case identification numbers appear to be low, they also occurred within several weeks of declining cases overall. And again, we really want to closely monitor what's happening as we continue the pursuit of screening. Having reviewed the experience, the Testing Subcommittee recommends continuing with safeguard screening with that same frequency throughout February in order to continue to implement and evaluate this additional mitigation tool. The team further noted that continuing through February offers the additional benefit of increased peace of mind for staff, students, and parents. Additionally, it was noted that we are entering a time of potential increased community spread, or at least risk thereof, due to the reduced community mitigation efforts. As our communities prepare to open, we may see a slight increase in cases as we adjust to those new reopening. And so keeping a close eye on that and keeping this mitigation plan in place seems to make some sense. In addition, there were some notations of the more contagion variant of the virus that might be potential within our community. And so again, keeping an eye on that throughout the month of February seemed warranted. Additionally, it remains very likely that teachers and school staff will begin to gain access to vaccines in February. And so again, maintaining this additional layer of protection while we pursue this important public health initiative seems prudent. At this point, we continue to strongly encourage registration and participation. We've been really pleased with our registration numbers so far. In a very short amount of time, we reached that first milestone of 65% of registered participants. We now, as of today, have more than 70% of students registered to participate in the program. Student registration has increased each week, and we see the highest participation rates at the upper grades, which is what we would expect. Our older students are much more capable of that weekly saliva screening. And again, our experts have advised that those really are the groups that we want to be screening more frequently. So that is really good news for us. Right now, we have more than 80% of staff registered to participate in the program as well. We originally anticipated about 65% to 70% engagement. And so again, we're really pleased with our initial overall registration rate and with that continued weekly increase. We've continued to communicate about registration and have increased information that we've provided on our website as well as via email. We've also enlisted the support of our PTAs and PTOs to encourage registration. I'll also comment, we've had some great volunteers to help assemble kits for us in hopes of the board supporting continuing through February so that we have those kits ready to distribute as early as Thursday for testing this week. So we're pleased with our registration numbers so far. We really are eager to see participation rates increase. Right now, we're seeing about 75% participation rate. And we know that as routines are built and as reminders continue to go out, this will become a more regular part of what we do on a weekly basis. But we are really looking to increase those participation rates, so we are catching as many potential cases as possible. The other thing that I'll note is the screening program at this point costs $11 per test, and we have had very generous support from our community, parents who have volunteered to cover the cost of their child, a few who have covered not only their child's costs, but those of another child as well. At this point, about half of our costs throughout January have been covered by those very generous donations and willingness to cover those costs. So we really appreciate that. We hope that might continue through February. But of course, people will have the option to opt out of that if they wish and still continue to participate in the program. Finally, we understand from our experts that once staff are vaccinated, they will no longer, they should no longer participate in screening. And so we'll start to see some of them fall off as they gain access to the vaccine. And so that again gives us another milestone to hit as we work through February. With support from the board, I would recommend continuing with the same weekly schedule through February. And then we will again review our experiences at February Committee of the Whole and make a recommendation to the board at your February Board meeting. So with your support, we would very much like to continue with that weekly screening for all three cohorts through February.
Or do we have, would anybody like to express a sentiment either way?
Sounds like a great idea.
Thank you, John.
I think it's serving the purpose that we wanted, taking, giving us more knowledge, but also making people feel more comfortable. So I think it makes sense.
I think it makes sense for all the reasons you said. I'm particularly persuaded that now is not the time to let go of our mitigation strategies when we have a variant that is more contagious on the horizon.
I'll make a comment. I also support it, but I want to let the board know that one of the nice things is that the administration was able to investigate this and get this started before the winter break. And what we're finding is now there are other schools who would like to do similar testing, and there's just not the capacity available. So thank you to the administration for getting on this quickly enough so that we were able to get in the door before the capacity ran out. Really positive.
For those listening eagerly awaiting the results this evening, I believe we are still waiting for those results to come in, but they will be processed just as soon as they come in. That is the one piece that we continue to work on. The lab is certainly being accessed by many districts right now, those that could get in before they needed to close the doors. And so we're seeing those results coming in just a little bit later than we initially had expected. But we will get those processed either by 8 o'clock tonight or first thing in the morning, so people know before school starts. The next update really has to do with educator and staff vaccines. We are working in close partnership with our neighboring school districts throughout Nutria to advocate for early vaccinations for our staff among that next round of 1B vaccination. So we know that opened up today, and we seem to be making good progress, though we're not there yet. And so I will acknowledge there's some frustration there because we are hearing about vaccines becoming available, yet appointments are incredibly hard to get. And we ideally would have a coordinated effort so that all staff or large groups of staff would be able to get vaccinated all at the same time. As you know, we've been working really closely with our neighboring school districts with the Cook County Department of Public Health, the Village of Willmet, and North Cook Intermediate Service Center coordinates with school districts to assist in coordinating the vaccine distribution. The Cook County Department of Public Health has a big task ahead of them, especially considering the size and spread of the department's jurisdiction. So we recognize this is a huge challenge. We have surveyed our staff, and approximately 95% of our staff and educators have indicated a willingness to receive the vaccine, an eagerness, I might say, to receive the vaccine. Some are already seeking appointments otherwise, and yet we continue to really work closely to see if we can get our plans for a centralized site approved so that we can administer the vaccine in coordination with our other school districts, our emergency service personnel, and make sure that our staff all have access to that. There are priorities, obviously, among the tiers. 1A would cover any health workers. And so for us, our school nurses, our school social workers, school psychologists, those are all individuals who count as health providers. Most have already accessed their first dose of vaccine and are currently awaiting their second dose. For our staff, we, as of today, have access to the vaccine, instructional and non-instructional staff. And so we are very eager to have that plan that we have coordinated with local school districts approved. We are aware that some of our neighboring health departments have already been able to start rolling those out to their educators, Oak Park, Skokie, and Evanston. Even Chicago has started to lay out some plans for that. They're in Cook County, but they have a separate health department. And so the Cook County Health Department actually covers all of suburban Cook County, so that really is a broad area to cover. We continue to work closely with them. We are very hopeful and believe it's entirely possible that all of our staff who wish to access the vaccine will be able to access that first dose in February, which means their second dose would come sometime in March before we get to spring break. So we are hopeful those plans will be approved. We have a local site willing to host that vaccine distribution for all of our educational staff and support staff. And so we are simply awaiting approval from the Cook County Department of Public Health as well as availability of those vaccines. Looks like Frank has a question.
Is the availability based on where our school district is, which is suburban Cook County, or where the teachers live, or any combination? For instance, if someone lived in Evanston, could they, one, get a shot? And, two, are there any reimbursement issues that we would have to approve? That we should approve, but that...
There aren't any reimbursement issues related to accessing the vaccine. Individuals can access the vaccine either from where they work or from where they reside. It really is a matter at this point of getting an appointment. And what we are seeing, what our staff are experiencing, are that very few appointments will open up, and everyone scurries to gather them. People are traveling as far as Blue Island, really all over, to access an appointment. And the appointments are very, very few and far between. So again, I think the plan of the districts throughout Nutria Township to have a localized site where all educational staff will be able to gain access to that vaccine in one day or in several days on kind of like a group vaccination attempt would be the best plan. And we're really hopeful that that gets approved. But in the meantime, people can go online. You can go to Walgreens, you can go to Jewel-Osco. We've heard of people among our staff being able to secure appointments in that way as well.
I've heard from several sources that especially the second dose of the vaccine can really knock people out for, you know, a good day or two. And so I just want to make sure that we're thinking about that operationally, especially if we have a large group doing it at the same time. We may have some folks calling in sick for, you know, a day or two after that.
Yes, what we've heard is those two days immediately following the vaccine at either dose can be challenging for some. And so again, ideally, if we have the opportunity to schedule these out on behalf of our employees, we could coordinate that a little bit better than if we're having all these one-off appointments being made. It's really quite confusing for our staff and problematic for the operations of the school district. That said, yes, those two days following receiving the vaccine, we are told, could be the days where there's symptoms. If symptoms persist beyond two days, we're told then we need to, the individual would need to seek additional medical evaluation that it may actually be COVID. And so there are definitely some nuances there. We are also told, and it was a great question asked earlier, if, once all of our staff are vaccinated, can we then release our mitigation procedures and look to make adjustments, maybe moving back to just a traditional school day? And what we hear from the Departments of Public Health is that those vaccinations may protect our staff, but it's unlikely that our students will receive a vaccine any time in the very near future, certainly not by the end of the school year. So they wouldn't be protected from transmission, from catching the virus, from potentially bringing it home. We're also told right now, although this continues to be studied, that someone who is vaccinated may be still able to transmit the virus. And so again, that's something that still is being studied. What we're being told right now is if someone does receive the second dose 10 days after, it's unlikely that then they would develop COVID themselves. But whether or not they could potentially transmit it is still being studied. So for all of those reasons, we are being told that right now the state guidance will remain the same. Six feet of distancing, wearing a mask, regular cleaning, all of that will continue to be in play even after our staff are vaccinated. We don't anticipate mandating that staff become vaccinated. Right now, we're seeing about 95% of our staff interested in becoming vaccinated, and so we're really pleased with that number. Mandating it likely would not lead to increased compliance in that regard. Some individuals may have a contraindication, maybe pregnant, or, you know, there may be some other things going on for them. So right now, those are our plans. Once everyone is vaccinated, I do believe that by spring break, we'll have a better idea of transmission. We'll have a better idea from the health departments if they are willing to relax some of those standards. For us, to bring all students back in person at the 5A campus, we would need to reduce that distancing to about four feet. So right now, we're at six feet consistently across our classrooms. To have all students come back into the classroom, that distancing really would have to go down to about four feet in order to be able to fit everyone in our schools.
Yeah, so, okay, so it's kind of, we'll see. That's what I'm hearing.
About the vaccine?
Yeah, the vaccine and then a bunch of decisions that have to be made and come together.
Right, so the next decision point will be that fourth-quarter decision point, and it really will depend on if the health departments, the IDPH, is willing to recommend something different from the six feet of distancing for us to make an adjustment to what's happening at our 5A campus. We would certainly talk about it, and we'll continue to talk about it, but it really, again, for us, it requires the health departments to reduce that distancing requirement or direction otherwise. But at this point, we've been pretty committed to following the guidance issued by the Illinois Department of Public Health. And I'll mention, a lot of us districts, superintendents in my collaboration, continue to really look at this really, really closely. Even reducing, for some districts, reducing down to five feet of distancing makes tremendous difference for them. Their structures are a little different, and their space is a little different. For us, our analysis really leads us to believe it would have to reduce to about four feet of distance, which may be possible. It may be that as adults become vaccinated and we learn more about transmission rates between students, some of those adjustments may be able to be made. So, we'll continue to keep a really close eye on it. Just as we know, our parents would love to have students back in campus, on campus every day, all day long, we would as well, and our teachers, I know, would as long as we can do it safely.
Like, yeah, the pieces in place, or you're getting them in place, right? The teacher will be vaccinated, and we will, you know, hopefully continue, we'll see monitoring the students, right? And we should know the prevalence of, you know, the COVID in the population of students, so.
It is another strong factor of continuing to do screening among our 5A campus students as well. That may help us to continue to evaluate the prevalence among our student population. I will say, on behalf of Mrs. Jackson, who I know is sitting in the back, we do have a schedule that would allow us to relatively easily make a pivot in that direction, but we really do need the guidance to adjust before we could pursue that. Okay? In terms of third quarter planning updates, Dr. Steen gave a great summary of the discussion that we had at the Committee of the Whole meeting, where we looked not only at third quarter and some of the adjustments on our 5A campus for scheduling, we also looked at enrollment for second semester. Today, we celebrate the beginning of second semester, so we had some new students coming on campus today and getting themselves oriented. We had a few students moving into the remote learning environment today who previously were on campus. And so, adjustments for a portion of our students, but for the majority of students, they continued on the same path. Their class assignments remained the same as long as they were in the same program from first semester to second semester. So, that was quite an accomplishment. I know a lot of work went into that, and we appreciate everyone's support in making that happen effectively. We mentioned strategic planning, and the CRC continues to make good progress on helping us to coordinate that. We do expect by February, we'll receive a report from the CRC, helping to guide those next steps. And then, at the February board meeting, if not by Committee of the Whole, we'll have some dates selected for each of those retreats that will need to occur likely virtually, but will need to occur in order to get our strategic planning process underway. Okay? In terms of summer planning, we heard a little bit about construction. We've also been coordinating facility access, so we know we have some summer school programming that we offer in district. And then, the Park District also tends to access our buildings over the summer as well. So, there's been a lot of planning happening to coordinate construction, facility access, as well as summer school. Like last summer, we expect to continue under strict mitigation measures throughout the summer. As a result, we do plan to offer in-person summer school opportunities, but those will continue to be focused on academic learning, intervention, and boosting. So, in answer to the question that was asked earlier, we won't be extending the actual school year, but there will be some opportunities for learning occurring over the summer. For our eighth grade students, we know that those opportunities also exist through Nutria as well. So, there's many different options that could be pursued. We will offer special education extended school year programming this summer. We'll offer a basic program for remediation of academic skills, as well as some opportunity for academic practice throughout the summer. We're looking at the dates really focused in July, recognizing that after this tremendous school year, many of us will need a little bit of a break at the end of June, our students and our staff as well. So, we're looking at running summer school without enrichment between July 6th through July 30th. So, this is a really focused and intensive program throughout July, and we hope many of our students will access it, and we hope many of our staff will elect to help us teach those programs as well. So, we're excited about those program offerings. Questions, Frank?
Yes, last summer, there was, you mentioned boosting, but last summer, there was a, like a two-week program before school started up to facilitate getting back on board, given that they had at-home learning. Now that we've had another full year of it, much, much more organized, but still a full year of not to the level that we would like things to be. Are we going to reproduce that, enhance it, or are we working on plans for that? Or what's the, what would that look like to parents?
So, a couple of things. First of all, parents can access the summer school program itself. And so, that will be that, those July dates for the summer program. We saw greater participation there than in the other boost program, which was like a two-week jumpstart. The two-week jumpstart, though, was based on some technologically mediated programming, and so, we do expect that that programming will continue to be available. The difference will be it won't have a teacher assigned to really oversee and coordinate that work. So, we'll be pushing out information to our families to access some of that practice work that they can do if they wish. That's our plans right now. We certainly will continue to evaluate those as we continue to evaluate the progress our students are making throughout this year.
Somewhat related question. What, I don't know much about this, which is what I'm asking. What, what is our process for parents who want to hold their kids back for, decided, hey, this wasn't good enough? And they want to try again?
So, retention is, I think, what you're speaking of? And we don't typically support retention. The research around retention doesn't show positive outcomes typically. If there is, though, a parent who has a specific concern, the first step would be to reach out to the principal, the classroom teacher, and schedule a meeting sooner rather than later. We certainly don't want to wait till the end of the school year to evaluate what's happening for a student and whether some additional remediation or intensive support might be needed. But retention alone doesn't have really good outcomes for it. We'd rather see someone access intervention during the school year, as well as the summer basic remediation program that exists. I will turn to Katie or to Kristen to see if there's anything I missed in that protocol that you might want to add in.
No, that would be, as much as what I would say, I think typically what we follow is the recommendation of progress from the school. If they've completed an academic year, it would be based on their report card and their progress assessed by the teachers and according to the standards. So, that's not a typical request for retention after a full year of that grade level has been completed.
Then, just a couple of other things of note. First of all, later on the agenda, you'll see the revised letters of agreement regarding the COVID-19 sick bank, the Family First Coronavirus Response Act, also known as FICRA, and all related provisions expired on December 31st, 2020. We had an agreement to revisit that if, in fact, that did expire. So, as a result, further delineation of the use of our COVID sick bank days is recommended. The original letters of agreement indicated the use of up to 40 days for an employee's own COVID illness, up to 30 days for the employee caring for an immediate family member with COVID illness. These two provisions remain. The revised letters of agreement permit the use of up to eight days for quarantine related to preapproval travel, preapproved travel, as well as up to 10 days for childcare needs related to COVID. You'll remember, under FICRA, there were all sorts of similar, but a little more complex and convoluted options that existed for employees. And so, this allows us to really bring it all under one umbrella and to track and support our employees who might be most in need of access to the COVID sick bank to ensure that they have access accordingly. So, those three letters are on the agenda later tonight. We also have property tax appeals. The district received two PTAB notices covering several different pins. In the board packet includes information regarding the potential refund liability for both PTABs. Robin Schwartz will be intervening on behalf of the district. And then, we have several FOIAs listed on the agenda this evening. The district received the following FOIAs. Jeff Axelrod, November 20th, 2020, requesting a list of staff who resigned for any reason, along with resignation dates, documents, and letters from October 29th through present. He also requests including documents about requested or granted leaves, also to send any, to send from October 29th to present documentation about suspected or confirmed COVID-19 exposure, suspected or confirmed cases for D-39 staff. Requested that we provide documents from January 1, 2020, about students partially or fully withdrawn from District 39 schools for any reason. The next is Jeff Axelrod, excuse me, on December 8th, 2020, requesting a list of staff who resigned for any reason, along with dates of resignation, copies of resignation letters, and documents explaining the resignation. Send documents about requested or taken leaves of absence, temporary or permanent. Send documents about suspected or confirmed COVID-19 exposure, suspected or confirmed cases of, sorry, for D-39 staff and students, and provide documents about students partially or fully withdrawing from D-39 schools for any reason. Jacob Shore, December 4th, 2020, requested all written communication with the Cook County Department of Public Health, including notes and communication with CCDPH, assuring the individuals were not infectious or contagious when last at school for students or staff ill on November 9th, 2020, at Ramona Elementary School, November 11th, 2020, at McKenzie Elementary School, November 13th, 2020, at WJHS, November 15th, 2020, at Ramona, November 15th, 2020, at HMS, November 16th, 2020, at WJHS, November 24th, 2020, at McKenzie Elementary School, November 28th, 2020, at HMS, December 1st, 2020, at McKenzie Elementary School, December 1st, 2020, at Central Elementary School, and December 2nd, 2020, at WJHS. Walter Keats, on January 4th, 2021, requested copies of IGAs and/or leases between Willmet District 39 and the Willmet Park District for use of either's property, including documents relating to use of High Crest Middle School by the Park District, as well as use of the community center, now the WJHS Resource Center. Include documents relating to use of D-39 property by the Willmet Park District Programs for Bell, Central, Harper, HMS, Howard, McKenzie, Ramona, WJHS, and the McHalean Center. Jody Cohen of ProPublica and Jennifer Smith Richards of Chicago Tribune, on January 7th, 2021, requested all contracts, amendments, memorandums of understanding intergovernmental service agreements, agreements of any sort entered into between the school district and schools, and any law enforcement agencies. Include all invoices, billing summaries, purchase orders, daily logs, and other payment records between the school district, schools, and any law enforcement agencies from 2015 to the present, all records documenting the services of law enforcement agencies conducted at district schools from 2015 to present. And finally, Zoe Yelson of SmartProCure, on January 7th, 2021, had a commercial FOIA requesting any and all purchasing records, including vendor information, from October 5th, 2020 to present. Again, those FOIAs have been responded to, and that concludes the FOIA report, as well as our administrative reports. Good breath before you move on to the strategic plan update? There's a lot. Frank, you got a question?
Yeah, I think it fits into the metric, but it was a question that came up when we were going through that. Two parts. One, one of the items in the metric report is the number of student absences. And I think this is a piece of good news, that in a typical year, because of, you know, winter illnesses and all that type of stuff, there is always a certain amount of kids that are absent. And I got the impression that this number was at least slightly lower than that. So, is that like one tiny silver lining to what we've been doing?
I like the way you frame that, Frank. Yes, that's a good silver lining, absolutely.
And then, a follow-up to that is, we spent the last couple of years, we've been looking at metrics for student absences and identifying patterns, whatever. Too early to do that, but will we, will we be able to collect that information for this year eventually?
Yes, we are tracking absence rates and have to report that, just as we would have any other year. So, students engaging fully remotely are counted as present, as long as they're present within their directed activities. Same thing, students in person, their attendance is also tracked accordingly. So, yes, that is exactly the data from which I pull as I generate those graphs every week.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay? Thank you. We do have an update for the board, as is typically our process. We provide updates throughout the school year. On September 21st, 2020, the Board of Education approved the implementation of the 2020-2021 District 39 Strategic Plan. The executive summary report will focus on mid-year updates under annual business sections. Those sections focus on building school culture and community, school safety, our science curriculum review, and sustainability, planning, practices, and education. And Ms. Katie Lee is here to give us that report and update. Thank you, Katie.
Good evening. As you know, I represent all of the administrators as we work on this as a team. So, let me first begin with building school culture and community. As we all are aware, District 39 values diversity, equity, inclusivity, and understands the impact that school culture has on the development of a deep sense of belonging community-wide, students, staff, and families. And as noted in this graphic, fostering a strong school culture and community encompasses most of what we do in District 39. And so, in recognition of that fact, we have moved this ongoing initiative to the annual business section of the strategic plan. So, one area under building school culture and community is the district's commitment to social and emotional learning. And for students, the district has prioritized dedicating time in the daily schedule to focus on forging connections and continuing to provide instruction targeted to the development of the SEL competencies. In addition, daily check-ins between staff and students have been embedded into the day for both in-person and remote learners, that we're cultivating relationships and supporting student needs. For staff, the district has focused on building capacity of our teachers through continuous learning on how to attend to students' social and emotional needs. A group of staff members took part in a Nutria Township Castle training series focused on the SEL competencies. Additionally, a group of staff has been provided professional development on how restorative practices create inclusive school and classroom environments. The district SEL committee is currently making plans to train a third group on the responsive classroom methodology in order to garner strategies that will further facilitate a sense of community. The SEL committee is also building instructional resources for teachers and staff to support skill building in the SEL competencies. This resource will include learning progressions, grade level outcomes, and lessons to guide the specific instruction of the competencies while offering ways to embed competency development into everyday instructional practices. Now, in order to inform these practices, universal social and emotional screeners were given, as we do for the past three to four years, to all students. The Mindsets Essential Skills and Habits MESH survey was administered to students in grades three through eight, while the DEVERO Student Strengths Assessment, DESA, was administered to students in grades PK through two. The MESH assessment has two components, a social and emotional competencies and school environment. The school environment is a composite assessment, looking at teacher and student relationships, school safety, school culture, and a sense of belonging. MESH results indicate that District 39 students continue to have the growth mindset and social emotional skills necessary for school and life success. So, for under social and emotional competencies in grades three through five, all all areas of the social-emotional competencies were at or above the 90th percentile nationally, with self-management being a particular strength, with collective scores that fall in the 99th percentile. For grades 6 through 8, students' collective responses indicated that social-emotional skills were well-developed and surpassed national norms. Most domains were at 90th percentile or greater, with one exception being social perspective-taking, where the district fell at the 80th percentile nationally. And of note, classroom effort and self-management, which both fell at the 99th percentile nationally. The social perspective was one of interest, and the definition that the assessment or the survey takes for that is about how students can interpret the teacher's perspective and take on the teacher's perspective. So sometimes we think that it might be social perspective-taking among peers, but it's actually a survey to gauge how students are able to assess and read teachers in these scenarios. I just wanted to make that distinction. School environment, for students in grades 3 through 5, the results indicate all areas are strengths, with composite scores placing Willmett at or above the 90th percentile nationally. Teacher-student relationships and a sense of belonging were areas of notable strength, both falling at the 99th percentile when compared to national norms. Also noteworthy was the area of teacher and student relationships were increased 7% since the spring assessment was administered. We'd like to point that out because it's also true in the 6 through 8 about teacher-student relationships. It's one that we've really focused on and worked on in building. And so it was nice to see it confirmed in these results. For students in grades 6 through 8, school safety was also a strength, with comprehensive scores falling at the 99th percentile. School climate and sense of belonging both fell in the average range of achievement nationally, and our areas identified for further investigation and needed growth, as scores on those domains fell in the 70th and the 50th percentiles respectively. The DESA is an assessment taken by teachers as they reflect on their students in grades PK through 2. What they look for are unique patterns of strengths and areas of need. The DESA is meant to screen students who may be in need of further social and emotional instruction. The results on the DESA indicate that 38% of students fall in the strength category. 59% fall in the typical range, while 3% were identified as having social-emotional needs. And it should be noted that many of those students in the 3% have already been identified and are currently receiving social-emotional interventions. As always, the administrator, staff, and students continue to add to the list of accomplishments. This is one area under diversity, equity, and inclusivity that is ongoing work. Although we participate in many of these events or learning, this is something that will be continuous and as we grow and develop in this area. But some of the examples of accomplishments would be that, you know, the teachers themselves, the staff themselves, have organized their own book clubs and book talks for continuous learning in this area. The students across the district participated in Unity Day and Kindness Day. We have inclusivity teams and equity teams throughout our district and the schools. The upper elementary, our grades 5 through 8, have participated in ADL's Walk Against Hate. And we continue to engage in learning about how to navigate some difficult conversations around one aspect of diversity, equity, and inclusivity when it comes to identities and people of different groups and being, you know, fully embraced by every member of the community. You know, one of the things that I realize about our district is that I'm very proud of our district is the work that we are engaged in is one that we recognize is ongoing. We can't participate in one event or be involved in one activity or learn about a series of lessons that we can implement and think that we have accomplished this task. And so that's, you know, this ongoing work just requires that development in practice so that that's simply something we do, but it becomes who we are. We also have dedicated our February Staff Institute Day to diversity, equity, and inclusion. So that will be our theme and focus, with a keynote speaker by an author of the name Douglas Reeves, who has worked in education and leadership for many, many years, and most recently has done much work in the area of equity and has a book coming out soon. So I need to pause here, and I'm going to try to encapsulate what this example provides all of us. You know, I think as adults that surround our students in all of the different communities, like their families and the school, and every grade level from elementary to, you know, upper elementary, we hope that we could have some impact, you know? And we've been working on this goal and this initiative for a while, very intentionally. And so I do not want to take away from what you're about to hear as an example of these students, but I know that, you know, we could only hope that we've contributed to their accomplishments and to who these four students are, and there's more actually. This is just one example, truly is a prime example of our end goal. So I wanted to pause and really share what was initiated by a group of Willmett Junior High School students. And you can see them on the screen, they're little. We had approval to show them, and we also got approval to show this short video. But I wanted to give you a little bit of background on this. So in November, a group of students sent 8th-grade-level administrator Eric Rieses a letter advocating for education around racial and gender slurs, and overall inclusion of others, sorry. And Principal Kate Dominique and Eric Rieses met with the students to discuss and understand what they would like to achieve. The second meeting was held by, or was led by Bill Hicks, an ADL liaison for No Place for Hate. The students agreed that becoming a No Place for Hate designated school in the workshops and educational opportunities that come with it would be a great place to start. These students have collaborated with the school leaders and Bill Hicks to adapt ADL's No Place for Hate student survey. They also created a video introducing, and it's this video, introducing the survey and articulating the intent of gathering information. The hope is that this survey will encourage both 7th and 8th-grade students to join them in forming a committee that will work with Bill Hicks to implement workshops for advisory classes, and as a result, become, quote-unquote, a legit No Place for Hate designated school. These students believe that it is an annual, ongoing commitment and not a checkbox to mark. We have to prove every year that our fight against hate continues. And as you can see, I'm very proud of this moment that I have an opportunity to share this with you because when we talk about civic engagement, when we talk about student agency, this is what we're talking about. This is the prime example of it. The elementary schools where these students have come from contributed, their families have contributed, the middle school that they attended has contributed, and, you know, the current school that they're in. Some way or form, the communities have really helped create a safe environment for these students to share with you and initiate this kind of effort. Kate Dominique is actually one of our panelists later if you have more questions about this. But I'd like to take a moment, if you don't mind. It's about a minute and 30 seconds of them introducing this survey that they so just, you know, developed and worked on, so.
Hi, my name's Moira.
My name's Marsha.
I'm Sabrina.
And I'm Nathan. We're 8th graders at WJHS, talking to you about the No Place for Hate survey.
The survey you will be taking is a form made up of questions about our school environment and how comfortable you feel. We want you to answer these questions honestly as possible because we want to create a safer space at Willmett Junior High. If we don't know something's a problem, then we can't fix it. So please, don't feel pressured to answer based on what you think the school wants to hear. Answer based on your personal experiences.
Why we ask identifying questions? At the beginning of this survey, we will ask you for the last three digits of your phone number. We don't ask to identify who you are. We don't ask these questions to figure out which student submitted which form. We ask so that when we all take the form a second time, we can see if there was any growth from student to student. We don't need or want your name, but we do want to see improvements.
Next steps, we are working with the ADL to create a No Place for Hate school. We would like to use your input to narrow our focus on the problems in our school. Using this form, we want to see what most students are struggling with. And after we collect the data from this form, we will be creating a committee to help combat the problems that students are going through.
Goals for the committee, we are looking for students to have passion for making change at WJHS. This committee will be creating workshops to help our students learn about how minority groups are treated within our school and our society. We hope to implement about two to three of these workshops into your homerooms by the end of the year.
Please feel free to email us if you have any questions or concerns.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to... My screen share here.
That coordinated, I will simply share that I had the opportunity to visit Kate and some of the teachers at WJHS, who were leading the inclusivity team there. And it happened to be the first day that the students joined the adults in this team. And what you just saw is only a fraction of the passion and commitment and agency these students feel around the work that they hope to accomplish. They were articulate, and they were inspiring, and they were courageous enough to sit in a Zoom call with a whole lot of their teachers and their principal and advocate for what they think is most important for us to see and do in schools as our next step in supporting all students. And it was one of the most inspiring meetings I've attended lately, and it was, really, as Katie explained, such a sense of pride in the students and the work that they're accomplishing, and in our staff, in their willingness to hear students and empower students to tackle this really important work. So thank you, Kate, for leading this. Thank you, Katie, for helping to coordinate everything that goes on behind the scenes. And I know that Kelly Jackson had a huge part in this as well. So just much gratitude to everyone.
Just kidding, I just want to jump in and use my board president prerogative and just on behalf of all of us, say, this is lovely. This is exactly what we want, and the fact that this was student-led, and then the staff supported the students, this is just fabulous.
So thank you huge to Eric Rieses and Kate Dominique and everyone else who's just really surrounded these children. And can't take away, though, it's 100% them. And that's really what makes it the most proud moment, is that we have students like this among our midst.
Erin wants to jump in too.
Oh, sure.
I was going to say, you know, I know this has been a priority for the district. And a few years ago, it was very intentionally taught to the students about being an upstander, and these kids stood up. It's exactly what we wanted.
So I will continue and finish a few more slides. Another part of our work is parent engagement. And so as you can see on this board with the leadership of Tony DiMonte and the Family Service Center, and also many members of our District 39 staff, we continue to host and offer these educational presentations. So one that is not listed here on the screen for you was one that we did at the beginning of the year because, by Doug Bolton, Building Resilience During a Pandemic. It was very well-received by our staff, and we felt that it was important that our families had an opportunity to hear as well. But topics such as parenting during COVID-19, Whole Brain Child, I won't read them all, Stress Management, Developmental Expectations, one that's coming up very soon, actually in a couple of days, and Social Relationships: Having Kids Navigate Friendships in Groups. All of these are listed on our district website, is also posted to the family toolbox. If any are interested in these past events, the recordings are there. But we'd like to invite and encourage all who are interested to join us in any of these events that are scheduled to happen. All right, so now, school safety. The state, so this is an annual event where the state of Illinois requires that school districts review school safety plans annually. And in efforts to continuously improve the security and safety in District 39, a security review process was established categorizing priorities and phases for implementation during 2017-2018 school year. As a result, the security measures are revisited and projects are identified as needed every school year. And in addition, District 39 regularly collaborates with the Willmett Police Department as well as the Fire Department. So at the start of this year, we actually identified these goals, which are continuation of the 2019-2020 school year. I think it comes to no surprise to all of you that due to COVID-19-related health and safety measures taking a bit of a higher priority, these projects were just placed on hold. It does not mean that they're not, but at this moment in time, when we're providing you an update, we just wanted you to know we have not forgotten, and it will continue, and work will go through the summer so that these plans are met. Now for the science curriculum review. This year marked the first implementation, or what was scheduled to be the first implementation phase of the revised curricula for science. And the goals were to teach using the adapted curriculum materials, Elevate Science for Elementary and Amplify Science for Middle and Upper Grades, grades 5 through 8. Typically, what happens is that we conduct ongoing discussions with the teachers and gather feedback that would be used to guide any updates or revisions. At the first year of implementation, we like to reflect on how the lessons are actually going and the use of the resources and effectiveness. So as far as elementary, as I shared before, our NGSS, which is the Next Generation Science Standards-Aligned Lessons, are being delivered. However, Elevate Science as a curricular resource needed to be put on hold. The main crux of that adoption was so that students can work closely together and investigate. And in light of what is happening, that type of learning modality could not occur. So what we did was we researched and found a digital platform called Generation Genius that has very rich videos and demonstrations that teachers could do that would still deliver the standards and the lessons that were aligned to them. We've received really good feedback from the use of it. I think what a lesson learned this year is that we need to be prepared, as far as resources, for any possible, you know, situation. And so we are actually going to continue with Generation Genius as being a supplement to elevate. The digital platform combined with the hands-on classroom is really a good pairing. So this, you know, we feel that the elementary teachers have become more and more familiar with the standards at their grade levels, which is preparing them for a more in-depth study for the way that we would like science to be investigated next year. So in the middle and upper elementary grades, NGSS-aligned teaching and learning is also underway, and the planned use of Amplify Science is in progress. The only modifications are any hands-on labs or experiments. If they do not meet the COVID-19 health restrictions, then those are unpassed. If they do not meet the COVID-19 health restrictions, then those are unpassed. But they are doing as much as possible. The ongoing discussions and reflections shared among teachers and the Department of Curriculum Instruction during grade level meetings, collaboration sessions, and our teacher surveys are guiding some notes so that we could make some updates and revisions throughout the summer and also to improve for the fall of 2021. So overall, the teachers seem to indicate a satisfaction with the curricular resources. We've had to deal with a few digital glitches, but those are things that have been improving over time. And they are accessing regular use of those materials. In particular, several have noted that the online simulations demonstrate science concepts well. And something that wasn't there before in our approach to science is the writing-based questions require students to build and express their understanding in argument form. And that's been a positive. We have found the need to modify some of the assessments to challenge our students a bit more or also provide some support. And so those are some, those are some, you know, reflections so far. The other part, which is a kind of a byproduct is Amplify Science. As we look at any kind of resource, we would want them to have a commitment similar to ours, which is the Equity Diversity and Inclusion. They have a very strong mission statement when it comes to that. So we are very, we're very happy that the resource that we adopted actually is very much aligned with our beliefs as well. So for sustainability, planning practices and education, anything to do with our construction practice, I feel that this is our statement of commitment to ensuring positive environmental practices in all of our construction projects. Past additions, renovations undertaken by District 39 were designed to meet and/or exceed rigorous energy codes and standards and all future design process will follow suit as well. Our design and architects, STR partners as well aware of this commitment. They continue to pursue these efforts on our behalf. So this commitment extends to all types of projects, like the installation of the air conditioning at Willmet Junior High. The project at the Willmet Junior High will include some life safety electrical work that is partially funded by a state maintenance grant. And in addition, STR continues to review the status of grants available at this time for construction and conservation. But there are none currently. So for sustainability practices and education, you know, we are committed to these green practices and they've been pretty institutionalized throughout our district. In all honesty, you know, composting has been challenging to implement this year. We are recycling. We are reusing what we can. We are truly committed to this, but admittedly, it's not to the level that we are used to and that we have always implemented. So, you know, we are doing everything that we can. We just had a meeting with our Environmental Awareness PTO Chair and we have some community members who are very invested in this initiative and, and this goal. And we continue to have conversations on how we could improve. And one is the devotion to get, you know, continue nurturing this love of nature, which is an unintended consequence, which is a wonderful thing. And also just continuing education when it comes to these topics. So the Go Green Willmet is releasing some professional development or some workshops that anyone and everyone can engage with and we will be promoting that in partnership with them. All right. I'm happy to represent and there are some people also here that could answer some questions.
I just want to say it's striking to me that in a year that has presented unthinkable challenges, you all have not gone so far beyond just providing our kids education and keeping people safe. You dug deep and forged forward with all of these initiatives and it's just so impressive. And I personally, I just was so struck by everything you said about the diversity and inclusivity piece. I really applaud how willing our district is to look at what's not working in all realms, but in this realm in particular. And so I, if it's appropriate, if, as you get that survey back that the students are leading, I know it would be interesting for us all to hear what you learned and what will come from that. But just a lot of appreciation from my end on all of these updates. It's always a lot of work and so this year it's that much more.
Any else?
I, and I would echo all of that. You know, this is, this is a great report and frankly, the strategy reports have gotten, you know, just continue to get better. So thank you very much for that. I, one of the things that was really exciting for me is to see that, you know, when we do, and this was commented, I think, Stone pointed this out earlier. You know, when we set a goal and start saying, okay, let's make sure our kids are upstanders. Then, you know, we, we plant those seeds and we get to reap the rewards a few years later. That's really exciting. It's nice to see that there are some areas where we can still plant some seeds. And I noticed on the MESH survey in particular, I think the sense of belonging for the fifth through eighth graders was maybe not where we want it to be. And I know we've been aware of that for a long time. And so I think it'll be very exciting to hear what you all think about how to address that, which I'm sure you're already thinking about and planning on. But I think that is incredibly important one. I think it resonates with me from my own kid's experience. And I think it speaks to a lot of the other issues that we're talking about, right? If you feel a sense of belonging in your school, maybe the inclusivity of anybody who's a member of that community becomes a little bit easier. So my first comment is I really look forward to hearing about what we're going to do about maybe, I, it's, I'll say getting the score up, but I don't care about getting the score up. I care about getting the feeling of inclusivity there.
Yes. You know, I would agree. Oh, I would also, we started talking about this even, just, you know, what, what is it about the sense of belonging? We now have data over three years. We can start seeing this as a pretty consistent pattern. And one thing is how they define that sense of belonging is how much students feel that they are valued members of the school community. And I think that's a point of reflection for all of us. The data does seem to break at sixth grade. So third through fifth is pretty consistently about the same and high. But then at sixth grade, we, and seventh grade and eighth grade, you can't ignore the fact that right at sixth grade is where we have more teachers as being their primary teachers. So we have a, like a teacher for math and a teacher for, so whereas in three through five, it's a bit more contained and there's this one individual. So really trying to understand how students define for themselves value in a community would be one of the things that we would want to.
Yeah, I was just going to share that that's continuously been over the past few years. I feel like we keep bringing that up as, as an element on the survey. And it was echoed a couple of years ago in that eighth grade survey that we did. It was also kind of echoed in some of those, the remote learning survey and the in-person survey that we did where we saw numbers kind of fluctuate at the sixth through eighth grade level about how they felt like they were a part of their classroom community and their school. So that's been a real challenge for us this year, just with all the different modes of learning. I think what Kate's done with her students at the junior high has been phenomenal in helping them have a voice in that process. We're going to mirror some of those things at High Crest. We've also been doing some work with identity and just talking about identity and who am I and how do I fit into the bigger picture? What's afforded us to do some of that this year has been through, we extended our homerooms every day to 25 minutes and really having some of those smaller groups. While they may not feel part of the bigger group, they do have kind of a close-knit community in classrooms. And it's enabled us to go in and do more, just, we call them community circle conversations where you're kind of just talking about problem solving and things like that. And it's just been, I, I got to join one the other day and it was just so fun to be a part of and hear sixth graders just talking about their feelings, which doesn't happen very often, especially these days. So, so yeah, I think that every little bit counts and every little bit is toward that effort. And yes, we want to see the numbers go up, but I want kids just to say like, I feel like I'm a part of this community and, and really identify as that. And that's our main goal. So, yeah.
That, that, that makes a lot of sense to me. And, and I would just say, you know, I'm very proud of us for being able to, first of all, go out and put metrics out there so that we can start to put some facts behind what, where the areas are of opportunity, but then not over emphasize the metrics and realize that, you know, the metrics are supposed to indicate something deeper. And the ability to, you know, one of, one of the things that Dr. Chronoskoly talked about very early on with us, with the board, is this sort of growth mindset and how we can, we can say, you know what? It's okay for us to say there are some areas where we can still improve and we're still working on it and we'll, we'll get better. Other topic that I wanted to mention, I apologize for taking up a little bit of time, but you know, when we talk about sustainability and the, the work we're doing on, on recycling and et cetera, I, I wonder if there is an opportunity to turn and do something which I see in my other, the other part of my life going on more and more and more, which is to really think about how our impact on climate change specifically and that usually can be translated into greenhouse gas emissions and energy, which is usually the major contributor for something like a, a school. How we can change that over time? So for instance, many companies are signing on to, in a, in a way, onto the Paris Accord. And so the, the idea of the Paris Accord is that you have to adjust your operations so that the overall increase in global temperature remains well below two degrees Celsius or even better, the, a better target is now 1.5 degrees Celsius. There are a lot of organizations out there that can help businesses, governments, but even entities like schools to measure what their greenhouse gas emissions are. There's something called the Carbon Disclosure Project that does this for a lot of people, CDP, and it's, it's well-known. And I would love to see us sort of take that next step and say, okay, it's great to be recycling. We want to be doing that. And, you know, we, there's a lot of things for us to do. How do we look out and say, especially for kids these, this age, how do we look out and say, okay, we need to do more than just being efficient. We need to reduce the amount of carbon we're putting in the air. How do we do that? So I would love to see us think about things in, in those sort of terms of how are we actually making sure that we're going down? Because if everybody keeps doing the same thing, we don't, we don't get there as a, as a globe. So those are my two comments. Thank you very much for the report and the work.
Other board members.
Jess, again, thanks. I think it was already mentioned that year by year, these reports are getting better, which is always what you want to do. From a school district standpoint, we have two goals, I think. One is to grow our, our children as people. And we spent a lot of time talking about that. And we've made progress and it's an ongoing effort. The other is to grow our students. So I wanted to ask some questions about the academic side that, of this report. In the, in the area of the science, I know we've, we've done a good job. We've built science labs. There's been a lot of effort looking at different ways of, of teaching science better. But when we're all done on the student side, the measure of success is how well we prepared our students for NutriR. What levels they get into, how successful they are, how comfortable they are in those levels. So what are the metrics that we have available, we're looking at, that we plan to develop? How do we know that we prepared our students better for NutriR now versus the past? And how do we have a continuous improvement program like we've been talking about in, in the, the social emotional area? What's our metrics? What's our improvement plan? What's our progress reports? In this case, on science in particular.
I, I'm actually happy to develop a better, more targeted presentation or report for you on this. I think in, for the annual business section, we focused on, you know, those areas. I think in the continuing business where it talks about student growth and progress and things, this could definitely be incorporated. I don't want to misspeak. What I can tell you is anecdotally, over the years, we've definitely discussed how articulations through NutriR has always produced their teachers telling us that our students are prepared for, you know, NutriR and all of the, of the challenges that they provide for our students. So I would like to continue to think about this and see what kind of metrics would be the best measure. Because I think if you look at where our students end up in NutriR as far as levels, if that is your criteria, they're really doing very well. Do I have the actual numbers currently? I don't. But that's something that we could pursue if that's, if that's our criteria of, of success.
I mean, we're obviously spending a lot of time, we're, we're making improvements, we're using best practices. You've done good work at that, but without metrics, we really don't have a way of identifying are what we're doing today good, but could have been better is what we're doing today good, but what we did before was even better? Are we doing well for our students in terms of other students that are going to NutriR? There needs to be some kind of metric. Anecdotal is, is, is the first step, but some, you know, some measurements, some criteria that can be reviewed, like a lot of the things we were just talking about on the social emotional side.
So if I can jump in, we've talked about this a little bit and will continue to, especially as we look at our strategic plan moving forward. But some of those metrics that we have relied on in the past include the surveys that are administered to our students after they move on to NutriR and their preparedness and success in their various levels. We also monitor their achievement levels through the MAP assessment and through the state assessments, one of which is a science assessment. So all of those metrics you, you'll remember are reviewed annually and will continue to do that. Whether or not we are measuring the levels that students get into at NutriR has been a topic of conversation, I know, among the board. And we haven't settled on that as a, as a reliable metric for whether or not that indicates success within our curriculum because there's so many factors that go into which level students take once they get to NutriR. But that's a topic of conversation we can continue to have. And again, as we look at the strategic plan moving forward, if the leveling system at NutriR is one of those top indicators of success, we can certainly incorporate that in new ways into that ongoing evaluation. It just hasn't yet been chosen as, as the premier indicator of success for a variety of, I think, really good reasons.
Yeah, that, that doesn't have to be the criteria, but something that is measurable, not from a survey necessarily just, but you know, something that, that can show where we are baseline, are we getting better? If not, why not? And so, but ongoing work, and especially as we present the strategic thing, you know, the, the science area, you, you, you obviously presented our good plans, but, but that part of it wasn't in this round.
I will definitely share more data on that.
Really impressive. Thank you, Katie. A ton of progress in the top year. Refreshing to not talk about COVID. Art got to talk about new things. It's really great. So thank you so much. It really, I mean, I can see the effort improvement over the years, especially a couple of years. It's really impressive. I, I did want to shout out there. I, I just completely love the, the, you know, what we call it? The parent, parent education stuff is, is fantastic. So it looks like a you know, we call it the parent, parent education stuff is fantastic. So it looks like a complete program of work. And I've been to a few and I, I get a lot of feedback from it. So it's fantastic.
I believe that Tony DiMonte might be having a side business happening.
You're right. It's been well received. It's, it's a programmatic approach and that, and some of the sessions build on one another. So we see a lot of the same parents that come back. It's worked really well and definitely lessons that we can take into the future and how we offer parent program, for sure.
Well, I'll have the last word on behalf of Ms. Dernwiler, who I know wanted to be here very much. And if she was here, she would be doing backflips to the extent she could on the work on school culture. So I just want to thank you on behalf of all of us, but also on behalf of her. I know it's near and dear to her heart. I think we can move on to annual business.
Wonderful. The fiscal year 2022 budget calendar has been presented to the board. We talked about it at the committee of the whole meeting. The board will be asked to pass a resolution related to fiscal year 2022 budget preparation during the action items portion of the meeting. Corey could certainly address any questions the board may have, but hopefully most of those were addressed at the meeting at the whole.
Okay. So now, this is another time for the community to address the board. Is there anyone present who wishes to address the board? Is there anyone attending virtually who wishes to address the board via Zoom?
Just have her one parent from before. If you're going to make another public comment, can you raise your hand in Zoom? So I know to move you over. If not, I'll assume that you do not have a public comment.
No? Okay. Then we will continue with our agenda. Next are our action items. The next order of business is the consent agenda under action items. Are there any items that the board would like pulled from the consent agenda? None? Mr. Panzika, please proceed with the motion.
I move to approve the personnel report dated January 25th, 2021. I move to approve the attached revised Wilmeth Educational Association, WEA, letter of agreement. I move to approve the attached revised letter of agreement with Support Staff Union, SSU. I move to approve the revision of the COVID sick bank for employees in non-union positions. I move to adopt the attached resolution establishing the school district 2022 fiscal year and direct the superintendent to prepare a tentative budget and approve the attached budget planning calendar as written. I move to approve the accounts payable for bills listed between December 15th, 2020 and January 25th, 2021 in the following amounts. Educational fund, $335,005.18. O and M fund, $179,267.05. Transportation fund, $62,288.19. Torch fund, $137 for total all funds of $576,697.42. I move to approve the manual checks issued between December 15th, 2020 and January 25th, 2021 in the following amounts. Educational fund, $1,054,684.03. O and M fund, $244,853.68. Transportation fund, $216.18. Torch fund, $585 for total all funds of $1,300,338.89.
Have a second.
Second.
The motion having been moved and seconded, all those in favor say yea.
Yea.
Do we have to do that by roll call?
You should.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Then will the clerk please call the roll?
Auntie Caesar, ready? Frank Panzika?
Yes.
Amy Paling? Mark Steen?
Yes.
Erin Stone?
Yes.
Lisa Schneider Fabs?
Yes.
Please have it. Motion carries. And thank you, Mark. Comfort items, old business, equity work.
Just a reminder to be reading our book. And if you haven't started yet, pick it up. The only other thing is I'm not sure if anybody else participated in the HEROES MLK workshop on January 17. HEROES is an organization healing everyday racism in our school. And it was exceptional. I was so impressed with what they put together and it seemed very well attended. And I participated in, I think Mr. Steen mentioned this last time, that it was a local history breakout group that was fascinating. I think it may even have been recorded. I think they said this breakout group was recorded. And there were two local residents who spoke about our own community around issues of segregation. NutriR, recent graduate from Glenn Co spoke and John Jacoby from Wilmeth spoke. It was exceptional. So if you weren't able to be there, see what they posted online.
Other than old business? Is there any new business tonight?
Yes, I'd like to just bring up to the board that I've been approached by the Wilmeth Park District. They've reached out to discuss access to the bathroom that exists on the backside of WJHS. This is an exterior bathroom with only access through the exterior. So there's no access into the school building. It's located on the backside of the school, faces the blacktop area that is back there. Essentially, the park district would like to have the option of updating that bathroom and making it available for patron usage during park district events on the playfields back there. So we talked about some of the requirements that would need to be in play for us to enter into some kind of an agreement, recognizing that we need to ensure there's not an impact on school or school functions. Certainly during school hours, that bathroom would not be able to be accessible because we use the blacktop so much. There's a number of things that would need to be worked out. Really, I'm just looking to make the board aware of this potential request and to seek feedback from board members if either you'd prefer we not engage in this ongoing discussion or if there are certain elements that you want to make sure would be considered as we move forward with this. It is a bathroom that right now hasn't been in use for some time. It did previously be used. It was previously used for, for a couple of different functions, but really it seems hasn't been in use for some time. So it will require some upgrades, some security elements put in place, some locking features, those kinds of things. But it does seem like a bathroom that may be able to be put back into use with some investment.
Board members? Any comments?
I just had a real quick one. I think the idea is good. If you have a resource that could be useful. I'm assuming that somewhere in there we'll look at any liability issues and make sure that we don't open ourselves up or that we're covered.
Yes, that will need to be looked at along with just ensuring that at some point, if, if there's some unexpected interruptions on school functions that emerge, we need to make sure that there's a discontinuation clause of some sort.
Be a great community servant. Having spent many years on that ball field.
Well, in the park district, in it, just to be full disclosure, they're also looking at installing a bathroom someplace in the community playfield. So this would not take the place of that bathroom, as I understand it. Instead, it would just be an additional resource. It would allow them to have a little more creativity with where they place the external building bathroom that they're planning on installing as well. That is, as I understand it, I have not studied their plans. They're really, they seem to be moving forward quite well with their plans. But yes, I think many people have acknowledged that use would be
Any other new business? Seeing none, we'll move on to good and welfare. Any tonight?
Yeah, I'll give one. This is just sort of building on what Amy reported on in the HEROES. You know, one thing I learned through that seminar was that there, well, for those of you who know, there was next week, February 1st, is the 61st anniversary of a really important civil rights activity, which is called the Greensboro Woolworth Lunch Counter Sit-In. So for those of you who remember, this is one of many efforts to integrate, you know, activities in our country. And one thing that I learned last week in that seminar is that we have a member of our community, someone who, I don't know if this person wants to be named, so I'm not going to name them, but I learned that this person was a part of that as a, as a young person and as a student. And, you know, it's just a great reminder to me that as we look around our community, there's a lot of people doing really, who are doing, have done, you know, have done really important work that we should all be grateful of and mindful of when we can. So I was excited to be able to at least celebrate that in my own mind. And again, I won't name the person, but I hope we'll all kind of celebrate it at least notional.
Yes. So a little way of background for this story, so I can set it up. A reminder to the board and introduction to people who didn't hear me talk about this in August is that I am lucky enough to live in a townhouse complex that has a lot of creative, delightful children that I have dubbed the Townhouse Kids. And the other piece to know for this story is that two of the Townhouse Kids are in the same third grade class at Ramona. So the second week after winter break, the school that I work for was still on adaptive pause, but the D 39 kids were back. And I was zooming upstairs in the half of my bedroom that I call my office, which is my desk. And it was maybe in the two o'clock hour, I'm thinking. And I heard this high pitched sonorific sound coming from outside that I don't normally hear. So I got up out of my chair, looked out the window and saw that the two third grade Townhouse Kids were standing in one of their front yards, six feet apart, playing their brand new D 39 recorders. And I was like, thank goodness for District 39. And, you know, it was so edifying because it's a global pandemic, but there's still third graders playing recorders. Exactly. And in a normal year, they would have been piled into a music room with 20 of their peers. But this year, the two of them are standing six feet apart in their front yard blasting away. And it was a glorious thing. So yes, just thank everybody who works on behalf of our children every day. I know how hard everyone is working.
Thank you. Lovely story. Any more? Anyone dare to follow that? All right. Well, may I have a motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss negotiations, personnel and special education?
I move to adjourn to executive session to discuss personnel and negotiations.
May I have a second?
Second.
Motion having been made and seconded, will the clerk please call the roll?
Auntie Caesar, ready? Frank Panzika?
Yes.
Amy Paling? Mark Steen? Erin Stone?
Yes.
Lisa Schneider Fabs?
Yes. Motion carries and we are now adjourned to the session. The time is 9:04. And for the board, we're going to take a five minute recess. Thanks, everyone.